Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. Tonight, this is the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees' work session. The time is 6:02 PM. Do you all stand before the allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's time like to have a moment of silence on military firefighters, road crews, sheriff deputies, as they serve our community. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee Mann. Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
Okay, we inform. Okay, old business. Just move off one, do you have anything?
Yeah. This is on the agenda, some things that were missed last week is, well, last week. We had a court. So, we need to make a, when I asked around, so you try to copy and paste it, we need to make a purchasing policy for the townships who know how to purchase things and pay our bills. And there was a a resolution passed out there, but it is, the dates were changed. So, we go to do the meeting, I have one with the today's date. And the actual attachment was sent around. I thought Steve would have made copies of that too, but I only have one. I have no copies of that for meetings. But in the course of general business and operations, Jefferson Township will be required to make various purchases of goods and services. This policy outlines these rules and requirements that the township employees and elected officials must follow in order to make a purchase. This policy is intended to confirm the state of Ohio law and best practices for government procurement. So, general practice, general purchasing policy is something to be thinking about. It was sent out here, everybody should have a copy of it. We'll discuss this more in the actual meeting.
I was just with him. You're already done in the meeting and I have to discuss the round.
Okay, will be discussions on this, Jim?
Did you write this?
Actually, I, we got it from somebody else and then we modified it for our use.
Who gave it to you?
The board of trustees.
Who gave it to you?
From another township.
Which township?
I don't know. I just got it in the mail, I don't know what it was given to me.
So, when you get help from your friends and neighbors, it helps us to make policy. If we want to not talk to our neighbors and divide and conquer, we don't, we don't get that done. And we'd have to do it if we paid our bills. I wouldn't even do this, because the bills are being paid in a timely manner, but they're not.
The bills aren't being paid because the two of you want to disrupt business.
That's obvious, that's true, Jim.
Jim, I sent you guys several emails of the reason why the bills aren't getting paid. The reason why is because if you go out and buy stuff from a retailer and you don't tell me what it's, what it's for, and then I get an invoice, how can I decide what line item to take? So, I send it to the department head, and they send me a thing that says, "Okay, to pay", but don't tell me what line item to do. So, I send it back and say, "I need line items." That's why the bills are not getting paid.
How do you have a vendor get six months behind and it's just not coming to our attention?
Six months, I gave it to, I've been sending you emails for six months saying that the bills are not getting paid. You can listen to every email.
Are you sending a copy of the bill now?
Yes, I've sent, I've sent the bill.
I guess, well, because number one, you're sending out a warning.
This, this problem we're having right here is what we're trying to get rid of. So, we have a policy, so this doesn't happen. We need to come up with a policy so we get the bills paid in a timely manner. We don't need the argument, we just need a policy. Nobody else pays the bills, you pay your bills at home.
Nobody's following the policy anyway, so it really doesn't matter how many policies.
We don't have, we don't have a policy, that's the problem.
So...
Do we have a policy on paying bills?
Well, one of the things that I saw with that resolution is effective immediately. That doesn't make any sense. There's too many bills that need to be paid this year to slam that in there.
Okay, so then, what do you?
What do you want to do then? Do you want to wait till '22 to do it?
Number one, you've got to change the administration, and I think the new trustee should have some input on this.
But in the meantime, how are we gonna get the bills paid? Okay, so we don't accept this.
We've been paying bills all year, so all of a sudden the bills are...
We had, we had...
As August 20th, I can tell you the exact date when I got the last bill, when Mr. Wolf was August 26th. He just quit sending me his bills.
Why you did this?
Right, he's been sending me his bills, but he just said, "Okay, to pay, verified", but there's no line item. So, then it takes me long, so I gotta go dig through the budget and find out and try to figure out what line items to pay, and then there may not be any money in those lines, or there's no, there's nothing that gives me any indication which line to use.
Then you're also sending emails asking for line items, but how can you look at a report when it's not accurate?
It is accurate to what I've been given, that's the accuracy that I can do.
Well, one of the, in your reporting, you've got an outstanding check report, okay? So...
Well, I can't help that the company don't return the bills?
Well, no, until we get, until we get this caught up, I want to see a comprehensive list of what we're behind on. You gave a spreadsheet.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but I don't have time. I sent the bills out, I don't have time to do a comprehensive list.
Well, you're going to use this on line codes.
Well, I've given you the bills, I needed the line item, I don't have time to sit up and do a comprehensive list.
So, going forward, once I make a purchase, you fill out a PO. To me, this is common sense, I mean, I do it with my employers. So, there's a, every employer, we need a PO, a purchase, we have the PO slip. So, who's the person making the purchase? Here's who it's from, who's what department it's for, who's the line item, who's we're gonna use it for, blah, 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 and you make the purchase, you give the receipt, or whatever the, you give, you give that to, sign it, and give it to the fiscal officer, the check can be made.
And one of the things that I saw was under the great Gene Woods.
Dean is gone.
He did a super blanket POs, and then the trustees don't see anything. They're spending money that nobody knows about, it's not coming across our desks.
You do know about it.
Yes, you do.
You sign the check, every, you sign the checks, you gotta sign the checks.
With super blanket POs, that's something.
You still have to sign the check, so you do know what's getting paid.
Super blanket POs are generally used for your electric, general standard bills that you get every month. Be it your electric bill, be it bread.
You've also got some super blanket POs out there for larger slush funds that are open-ended. That's a problem.
No, you can't, you can't do it, you can't, that's not allowed, you can't. They're not allowed to do that.
Fuel, oil, gas bills, stuff like that.
There's only, there's restrictions on what you can do a super blanket.
Yes, there is.
Certificate on. You can't do it for open ends, like going by and this, that, and this like that. No, you can't, there's restrictions on that.
So, you create this policy that you didn't write, and you won't disclose who helped you write it.
We did, nobody helped us write it. We, this...
Then you have...
Just read it, read it, see if you agree. You'll get, just read it, see if you agree with it.
All I have to say is whether you agree with it or not. And if you don't agree with it, and you don't want to vote, then we just won't vote for it, and we'll wait till next year. But we're trying to get something done. The point here is we need to get bills paid. Now, if you don't want, there's no use in arguing about it. We just wanted to discuss it, if you don't want to pass it, then give us a way to get these bills paid. Right now, I have thirty-seven bills that I'm digging through, trying to figure out how I'm gonna pay, and that's not all of them, because there's still some coming in.
But you don't want outlines what they are, you want some help.
That's the department head's job.
That's, that's exactly the department head's job, right. And I've sent you bills, I asked for help on them, and no response. I've sent you copies of bills, and I asked for help on them, and no response. I've sent you even a updated appropriation to look at, and no response. Now, you want me to itemize, you want me to payroll, you want me to do HR, you want me to do fiscal officer job, and now you want me to itemize everything? I'm sorry, Jim, you're gonna have to do something and get somebody in to help you.
All right. Any other old business?
Wait a minute, no, this is, this is not all right. Are you gonna get somebody in?
So, you can have another scapegoat?
What are you talking about, scapegoat? Wait a minute, you don't do anything, I don't even know why you're a trustee.
Great, he's playing it like a record. He's playing it like a record. He's laughing, he doesn't seem to know anything. Okay, so we discussed this, okay, go ahead.
But look, I need some help, and if you want, if you can't answer my emails, then you're no, you're no use to us. You might as well just go sit in your office. You're worthless.
Okay, so, we've had a discussion about that. The work session was discussing, to kind of get about the old business for the record reading, and we've done that. You asked if there was any old business. I guess this kind of also goes under old business. I've seen a bill for something that we started when Steve came into administration. It's the, the Ohio Township Association has this clout membership that we belong to. It is meant for large townships, which we are not. And just trying to save as much money as you can, I have a resolution here. The Jefferson Township Board of Trustees to hereby decide to stop the township clout membership with the Ohio Township Association, we save the $200 a year. So, that's, we're gonna have to match it.
So, what do you know about clout?
It goes for the big townships, and I know we don't, we need to save $200, we need to stay good. What do you know about it? The, the, what do you know about it?
Well, number one, we qualify to be a member. Number two, it gives us special legislative...
You mean chair?
Well, they have a meeting in the OTA, and they have their own agenda that they push through. So, in other words, if you want to change something in the state, well, they operate somewhat like, somewhat like a lobbyist, somebody to represent. So, you've got some representation through that membership of that group. So, that puts us at the same table as the big boys, the mighty townships, Westchester, and so forth. So, we qualify for that, but yet you feel we're just too small a town.
Have you, did you?
No, it hasn't been.
Oh, and OTA, did you go to the meeting?
You've got it, you haven't had any.
Yeah, well, we had one, and when we had the OTA meeting, when we were first in there.
I've been there.
You went to the first meeting, I always went to the first meeting. Then the second meeting, only person there was me, and there was nothing done, and that group is worthless. They don't do anything, not as a whole, they must do something behind it. I sat in the meeting, so it's worthless, it's not doing anything, like you said. You, that's what they tell you they do, but that's not what they do. Somebody needs to sit in that meeting and see that. I sat in the meetings when I go to OTA.
Okay, so we have to do some, you know, that with you. Okay, so, I guess that's new business. We've got all the trustees, all the resolutions over the last week, we were discussing those, Jim?
Only two in the meeting.
One, two in the gym, okay.
The other one is the advance, we have to request for our advance for property taxes.
Okay, that's one.
I have to make copies, because it's not, you know, up to date.
That's why you're talking to Wolf. Do we know who gave the permission to break road man's car lease today? Do we know who gave permission to the road department to break road man's lease?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Well, I saw what was going on, so I came around the corner, I live around a corner from it, and the road department, three trucks, two trucks, and three men were out there. One was sitting in the truck, and the other two were out working the leaves from around these trees. Why, why can't Sheila, or Maxie, or Linda, and them get their leaves wrecked too? Oh, I don't have any leaves, but why can't I get mine wrecked? Why didn't he get his driveway?
Overruled.
But I'm just saying.
I guess you're gonna have to ask Mr. Mann now, so don't put that on you.
Why would we ask Mr. Mann? Why should that be allowed? Does somebody give permission?
Listen, Rothman, you have jurisdiction over the road department, you were down there talking to the employees, so why don't you stop by and find out?
Why don't we just ask Mr. Mann, or ask Steve, who gave permission?
So, I mean...
Well, I mean, it seems to me like the board of trustees should know they should be the ones that gave permission.
For authorized seasonal people to work past beyond the season. Do you know that one?
No, you had a problem with it?
One December.
You worried, you've seen all the resignations from staff since you went down there and met with them?
No, they...
I've seen one.
The others two.
That's probably because of you.
So...
You spoke my mind. Because I asked, wondered, I saw why, and I know my, I know the answer, I find. And I want one to have a close-out interview, I think it's a good thing to have. You grow as a company, you grow as a township. Having a close-out interview with people is why we need to voice back with them. So, I'm willing to do that with either one.
And old business.
I, can I say something? I have a question. We have a, according to, I don't know, some of this agenda, but the last agenda, our last two meetings, one is on 21st and then 28th. That's a close-out meeting, according to the last agenda, that's the agenda. What, what's gonna be discussed at the close-out meeting?
I don't know, we haven't gotten that far.
Okay, what's gonna be discussed? Yeah, what's gonna be discussed at the end of the meeting?
The only thing I know we need to do is pass some sort of budget, which historically, we've never passed a permanent budget going into year end. So, we haven't had meetings leading up to that. I don't see that happening. The administrator is required to give the trustees a budget, so I'm guessing we're gonna just pass a temporary budget until we get into the new year and then start digging into it.
We ought to have one done, we've seen his time sheets and all the hours he put in, he had worked out and doing budget work, so we ought, we ought to make a...
Well, I'm sure you're gonna walk in with a budget prepared by somebody else, so...
But, you know, you mentioned that, we never had a permanent budget. We can't in Jefferson Township, cannot have a permanent budget, because there's too many changes that go on. A permanent budget's not due till 1 April, so we have to work on a three-month budget in January until we get together and get a permanent budget. Because nobody wants to say, "I wanna buy this this year." Say for this, let's use the fire department as an example. If you wanna buy fire trucks, you need to tell the people who are doing the budget, you want to buy, that you want to buy these fire trucks. Don't wait until the time you want to buy in the middle of the year, when we didn't budget it in the budget, we don't, we can't do that. You cannot have a budget, a permanent budget in Jefferson Township at the beginning of the year.
Well, especially...
Well, we've never gotten one done, so I'm not gonna put...
Even before you were here, we've never gotten one done. I've not seen a permanent budget, even before Steve was here, we've not had a permanent budget. It changes. Any township that go through that budget will change. They may call it a permanent, but it's gonna change. You can call it what you want, it's not gonna stay the same the whole year. We need to have at least two to three meetings a year to look over that budget and move things around if we have to. And I mean, that's just how, I mean, of course, that's my opinion, and I hope that you guys will consider it. But I just needed to know, I mean, I can't just come into the 28th meeting and you guys expect me to have something if nobody tells me what I'm gonna need. I, I, I hear grumblings about not getting the information to be able to do the budget, but nobody calls me on the phone. It's always some, it's always some email or something saying, "I didn't get this, why don't you send me an email and tell me what you need?" I can't read mine. I'll give you, if you need it, I'll give it to you, but you gotta ask me for it. I can't read mine, I don't even have time to read mine, I don't have time to see the front door half the time. So, please, please cooperate or work with me or something so I can help you guys.
What do we need in the way of a budget? What needs to be done so we can do payroll and everything first of the year? And pay bills come January?
Need to have a temporary budget, because our meeting is January 4th, I think. Pay, pay, first pay period actually is January 3rd for the monthly, and January 6th for the bi-weekly. Well, if we don't have a budget, actually, nobody should be paid. And then, if we don't have one, we're talking about ending this year.
And we always run that issue down to the end hour, same thing with the April 1st deadline, because there's always chatter about shutting down township.
Doesn't mean it's right, though.
Yeah, doesn't mean it's right.
It doesn't mean it's right, because we always do it, and the auditors haven't stuck to us yet, but they will.
They can write it up all they want, they don't do anything about it, so...
They will, they wind up in fiscal warning, that's what we're gonna see. You know, you think about, you think of it that way, and it's gonna become that way, and then we're gonna have a problem.
We need to live with the policy like a close-out on a job site, you know, you, the punch list, as few things as you can have on that. Get to the point where we do the audit, and we only have a couple of things, they, findings, a couple of findings they find, but year after year after year, they keep finding the same thing. We open year on minutes, we're not doing this right, we're not doing that right, and then the same thing, time after time again. We need to prove on that.
Any other old business?
You don't have anything, Jim, you want to discuss? Well, that's another, then that's another issue, because the work session is supposed to be to discuss the things that you need to, you need to vote on in the regular session.
You're not a legislator, so...
Well, I don't care, I'm just suggesting.
What you think about that is not material.
Well, if...
Well, maybe we work as a team, and it may happen, or we could just...
Any other old business? New business?
Okay, so, I have a resolution I will talk about, of course you probably will agree, the Jefferson Township Board of Trustees to hereby decide to turn off the cable TV service at Kimmel Road Fire Department building. Stay somebody, I don't want to get cable TV there. Got a comment on that, Jim?
No, just throw it on the table for a minute. Any other new business?
Credit card policy. So, and it's kind of old, old business, but it's been brought up new. So, in, in 2019, was news, we're like, our Jefferson Township trustees to hereby approve the 2019 credit card policy for Jefferson Township. Assigned by three trustees, so all voted yes. And in there, read it, section five, liability. The authorized user will be personally liable for reversion of township if proof is not provided to the fiscal officer and the board of trustees. So, it goes, it states in there the different ways to do that, but a receipt needs to be given for the credit card, or the person that makes the charge of the card is personally liable with that charge. And then this paragraph, the county prosecutor is authorized with the assistance of the trustees and fiscal officer to, and shall recover the amount of any unauthorized expenses incurred by an authorized user who either uses a credit card, allows another person to use a credit card, or is unauthorized in an unauthorized manner, or fails to immediately voluntarily make restitution to the township on the total amount of unauthorized purchases. So, we have a problem with credit cards in that, we're not getting receipts in. So, I think this, this resolution needs to be made good, and we need to use it. It's been on the audit, it's been on audit, and we've been, that's why this was done, because of the 18 audit. It needs to be talked about, it needs to be lived by. Any comments on that, Jim?
Credit card policy is a trainee.
We didn't...
We just had an issue with the credit card policy when we had the banquet for all our employees that you decided not to show up to. Our credit card got declined.
You were the only trustee to show up, so that's...
Our, our credit card got declined.
Do you know why it got declined? Did you guys make a limit on fifteen? No. You, you made a limit of $1,500, the charge you put on was over $1,500. That's why it got declined. Do you want to know how I know that? Because you can go look in there and see the decline, and you ran it twice. So, I, you know, I saw that. That's why it got declined. You trustees put the $1,500 limit on it.
Yep. That's in the resolution, newer than that, I saw.
So, don't try to blame that on me or close another account, that's not true.
But I, the way I look at it, I mean, we get to clean straight up, and we talk to the county prosecutor's office to help us make, get the money back.
But you, I assume you got a resolution to change it tonight on the policy that we're gonna spend 15 minutes talking about, you're just gonna...
I'm not changing the, no, 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 I'm not changing the resolution, I have no resolution to change. Let's live by the resolution we have, I don't need to change anything. No, I do not, Jim.
And that doesn't just apply to the one credit card, it applies to all our credits, not just credit cards, account and credits and everything, and it's not being enforced on anything. Again, it goes back to the idea...
I mean, we can't even check into an hotel room without those things getting declined.
Well, who's checking into a hotel room?
You got OTA coming up.
Yeah, well, who's got a credit card to go?
So, I guess we're not going?
Well, did you tell me to order your credit card? Because I don't have your credit card. I ordered you a credit card and never came to me. The bank called me, I told them I didn't get the credit card, they shut it off. So, did you get your credit card? I did what I should do, the card's lost, we answered to the bank, we did not receive it. They shut it off. They asked me, did I want to issue another one? I said, "No, because we're not getting them." So, if you go to OTA, you're probably gonna have to get reimbursed.
I ain't having it. We're gonna wait two months to get reimbursed by you.
I don't, if you were to submit, if you submit your thing in a timely manner, I write you a check in a timely manner, and you will, it will not be two months.
The employees fronting money to do township business, those days...
You're not an employee of the township.
Any other new business?
What's an employee fronting money?
If they are, that's their decision, nobody tells them to do that.
What's an employee fronting money?
That's their decision.
It's a comedy you speak, give me an example.
I like rainy paying for software licenses.
All you have to do is submit a purchase order.
I need you to complain about it, okay, let's actually get it over with.
Okay, you've got, and we can keep digging.
All you have to do is submit a purchase order. If you didn't follow the rule, submit a purchase order, you wouldn't have to. You don't need to have a credit card unless it's an emergency in this township. You do not need a credit card, all you gotta do is submit a purchase order. If it's an emergency, I can understand you need it. In fact, that's what we started off when I came in. Credit cards were only used as an emergency. And then you guys came along and said, "We need to have something different." And now we're having all these problems, we never had any problems with the credit cards.
Any other new business?
Not only, not, uh, only. The new business is we gotta get a budget done. We gotta pay the bills. And I won't be able to do, we won't be able to do a budget, an accurate budget, only based on what they say we're getting because I don't have any clue or will not have any clue until all the bills are paid, what you're gonna be able to carry over. Because I don't know, you know, what bills we gotta pay. By the way, the new business for me is Friday is the deadline. I will cut off paying bills on ten December. No more paying, no, no bills coming in. They'll have to wait until January. So if you already got some bills, you need to send them to me. And then I, cause I have to close out. I have a lot of work I have to do to close out the year, the U N, to get it set up for the new year. And I need at least two weeks. At least.
Any other new business?
Yeah, well, um, new in one way, older than another. Uh, we've had, uh, I can't remember her name. A lady from across the hall came in a couple of meetings back complaining about us not being responsive when people come to the door. And them answering, do you remember that conversation? And us answering, them answering the door for us and just, you know, trying to get things done and all that. So, uh, I had this communication. I contacted Immun Communications, this company that does our telephone service. And I spoke with the gentleman, uh, there to put a phone in the common area out here and it's strictly a internal phone. It will not dial out. The mic will call eight other numbers. I might call long distance on it. But to, to do that, we need that done. So the people can pick up the phone. It's, and he's, he was very informative with me. So, uh, Lawton's number is one-one-one. They push one-one-one. It rings my phone in the office, because I'm never there. He can say, we can set it up and ring that and ring your cell phone at the same time. Great. And so the communication from somebody wanting to get ahold of us gets to us and we respond. So, um, I'm just looking at a second, a signature on this P O so we can get this going. I signed it. I approved it, but needs a second signature. Correct, Jim?
Actually, no, actually, no, because I can create a P O and then you guys will sign it.
Okay.
But then you was doing it. You would.
So there'll be a P O be created in the desk, Jim, for us to get this, because then we had an email from Lori over at the, across the hall also, uh, the same thing just happened again. We've heard stories about people banging on the doors, people wanting to meet with the zoning guy, can't get him, supposed to be there, hasn't answered, blah, blah, blah. So we just need to better improve our public image, because the, the public image is they can't get ahold of us. So we need to improve that public image.
If you, if you look at that right now, there's two phones, one for Ohio State extension and one for the, so we need one too.